The meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order. Roll call. Mia Hernandez.
Present.
Valentina Estes.
Present.
Rachel Alexis Blackwood. Not present. Madania Altomarano.
Present.
Richard Montenegro Brown. Not present. Alright, can I ask you all please stand and enter would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we just stand. One nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
That's your second test of life. They did another. She goes in the flesh. At this time, I'm gonna ask, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Clerk, we do have one adjustment to, excuse me, I'm ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
Alright, so we have no adjustments to the agenda? Alright, moving forward, public appearances. Um, anybody in the audience not appear, are appearing on, uh, excuse me, appearing for items not on the agenda? We have no one in the audience, so we're gonna move forward. Moving on to consent agenda, part C.
To the public appearance, I, I went in the audience and I gather we did not receive any written comment uh, prior to the meeting wanting to be read, so.
Mr. Merida. Continuing on to consent agenda, item C one, approval of minutes from the special meeting of Imperial City Library Board on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Madam Clerk, uh, there is one um, item that needs to be corrected. Um, under action item under C one, there's a typo which is the spelling of Brown.
Um, Katie, I'm gonna run this by you. Um, we've had this issue in the past with spelling grammar issues, as long as it doesn't affect the body, we've moved forward.
Yeah, well, and we're giving the specific edit, so you'll be good.
Okay.
To just approve.
Alright, so Board of Trustees, um, if you choose to do so at this time, you can move forward with choosing to make a motion and approving the minutes from the last meeting. And the correction of the typo will be fixed and it does not make any changes to the body of the minutes.
And one other comment, just because two of you weren't seated, you may wanna just push this to the next agenda and let the, the, the members who are here, just so you don't have to be concerned about the minutes, but that's up to you. So you can make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting. Um, I don't believe you need the, any of these items approved by next, the minutes, no. So if you feel more comfortable, this may be one that you just push. Yeah, they weren't. Yeah, yeah. So it'd be a motion if you're interested to continue this item to the next agenda.
So if you're making a motion, you would just let us know that you're making a motion and then someone can second it.
I, I, I make a motion to continue the approval of the minutes, eh, to move the approval of the minutes for the next meeting.
Alright, I have a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Alright, so we do have a motion, let's go ahead and we will start the voting. Alright, you may proceed to vote. Got one more that I need to register, there we go. Motion passes three zero to postpone minutes to next meeting. Alright, moving on to section D, action items. D one, discussion of appointment of Imperial City Library Board of Trustees. So at this time, this motion is to appoint in the swearing in of the Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Estes N. Hernandez, which prior to the meeting tonight, we have gone through and done the swearing in of Ms. Estes and Ms. Hernandez, they are officially taking the oath and signed their oath paperwork. Um, at this time, the only part left would be making the appointments of the library board. How would you like to proceed with this item, ladies?
Council makes the appointment, so I'm not sure why it's written in this way.
Okay.
Council made it.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yeah, it's resolved, we're resolved.
Yep.
Okay, so we will, we don't have to make any vote items because this was done by council and the ladies were already sworn in. So we'll move forward to item D two, discussion action, selection of Imperial City Library Board Vice President. Um, this is for a selection of the vice president for the Board of Trustees. At this time, how would you like to move forward with selecting a vice president? You can choose to postpone this due to the missing of the two members, or you can proceed tonight.
I think we should wait for them to be here to make that decision.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make the motion to, um, to continue this decision.
Okay, I have a motion to continue the selection of a vice president. Do I have a second? Okay, great, I have a motion and a second. Give me one second here. Alright, you may vote. I just need one more vote, I've got two. Great, motion passes three zero for continuing of the selection of vice president till the next Board of Trustees. Alright, moving on with our agenda to item D three. Discussion action, Friends of the Library, and this is a discussion for establishment of Friends of the Library.
Members of the board, um, it was directed to provide more information for an establishment of the Friends of the Library group with the five oh one C status, excuse me, five oh one C three status. Benefits of a library friends group includes fundraising, library promotion and marketing advocacy, excuse me, advocacy, ad- advocacy. And creation of a, a strong library volunteer force. One criteria required for five oh one C three status is that there are, are established bylaws for the organization. United for Libraries, Division of the American Library Association provides resources for friends groups, including a free toolkit for starting a friends group. The following are identified in the toolkit to start a friends group. Development of a core group of friends members who will actually be doing most of the administrative work and strategic planning. Development of a written operating agreement between friends and library administration outlining respective roles and authority. Establishment of purpose and determining priorities for service. Development of an implementation structure that includes such commu- um, committees or task force, forces that will help, help the group accomplish its yearly goals. Development of organizational bylaws and establishment of a five oh one C three organization for the purpose of accepting tax deductible contributions. Development of a dues structure, development of a recruitment campaign. Feel like I'm missing something, excuse me. Um, s- so it is our recommendation to move forward with a friends group. Um, um. We will start with, um, working with the, the board to recruit a friends group and then once everything, once we are able to us, um, create all the paperwork, we would go move forward with the five oh one C three status request.
Do you have any questions from the board?
All for it.
Great, um, do I have a motion?
Second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion to move forward and a second to move forward with establishing Friends of the Library. Alright, you may go ahead and vote. Motion passes three zero with establishment of the Friends of the Library. Moving forward to item D four. Discussion action, board organization, we have two parts to this item. Part one is review of the organization of the board and part two is recommendation of the board organization. Board members, would you like to take this time to review the organization of the board and recommendations of the board organization, or how would you like to proceed? The PowerPoint, okay.
Members of the board, the board requested further information about the roles of the community services board and library boards. Local libraries and the Alcentro Community Services Department was contacted to determine the roles of their board, that their boards provide. Out of the four libraries, two are managed by the Library Board of, Board of Trustees. Callexico identifying their board as advisory and Brawley, who is currently uncertain of, of the li- their library board type. Imperial, Imperial County Free Library is governed by the Imperial County Board of Supervisors and city of Alcentro staff were not available to provide information. Confirmation was also requested whether the library had a friends group. Brawley Camarena and two of the county's branches had friends groups, um, for the library. In order to provide the board the most credible information, I would like to spend some time discussing the purpose of a library board by providing the following details that are identified in the two thousand twenty two California Public Library Trustees Toolkit, which is developed by the California Library Association, Association in partnership with the California State Library. Five main principles are identified, which are the board's mission, scope, governance, duties and learning. I will review the first main principle. The mission identifies the library's trustees commitment to the educational, informational, community and economic development and recreational roles of the public library. Public libraries have long offered free access to books and other informational resources, but in today's environment, we provide much more. All these activities require resources. The central mission of the library board is to help identify and prioritize the programs and services needed by the community and to help manage and develop the funds and partnerships needed to fulfill them for the continuous improvement of the library. Um, the photos are quite small, it was hard not to put a hundred on there. The very top is from one of our storytimes, um, um, where IVRP, IVROP actually came out and did the storytime with the hungry caterpillar. Um, but we have storytimes, uh, at least once, um, sometimes three times a week. Uh, the second is our lunch at the library. The third is our team makers meeting, um, actually have a, having a training. And the last is just some of our library users. And so, um, these resources come from the, um, California Library Trustees dot org. This, um, this was just added this year in two thousand twenty two, it's a great resource. Um, I think it must been recently that it's been put up, or else I would have found it, um, when we first, or organized the board in January. But just some of the things that the libraries are doing, uh, they're providing children and caregivers, um, engaging storytimes where they're, they're not, the children aren't just attending the storytimes, the parents or caregivers are with them, um, um, learning with them as well. We're providing summer lunch to, um, schoolchildren, um, providing places for teens to come to work on their homework, um, get internet access. Um, providing immigrants learning in lo- local resources to get language skills. Uh, people getting skills for training, um, to help find them, find, find jobs. Um, so the list goes on, we have veterans, um, resources, most of those are all, um, uh, digital. And I'll go ahead and move on to the next slide. No, actually, I'm not, I'm teasing you, I decided to keep it there for you guys. At this time, it is my recommendation to the board to remain this Imperial City Library Board of Trustees. Reorganized in January of this year, the procedures are still at its early stages. I will, I will provide information on one main principle each month through my director's report or as a presentation as directed by the board. During this time, items, um, will, excuse me, during this time, items, each item will be identified. And I will look to you for your direction.
Of what the library board could do. You volunteer, you devote a lot of time to this activity and we wanna make sure that you feel like you're engaged, that, that what you, what you do has value. And the thing that occurs to me in the course of the discussion about, uh, about the Friends of the Library is that that may be a vehicle that, that, uh, bring, uh, what Mr. Brown envisions to, uh, really to life. Uh, and so, uh, uh, I think we should take a post look in, in terms of the corp, of, of the formation of that corporation and how that corporation will interact with this board. I think that, that connection might well be the vehicle uh, by which, uh, the library board can have some real impact. And so, as, as, as it forms, I mean, I, I think you, from prior slide, you see, you see where our library board is basically advisor. And, and I think that is a big part of what you do, uh, but it can also be frustrating if, if, if in that role, you feel like, and this is purely hypothetical, you feel like the council isn't listening. I don't, I don't know that that's our council, so I'm speaking hypothetically. Uh, but, uh, I, I think that could be a source of frustration if, if what, if you feel like what you're doing isn't, you're not being, uh, listened to or, or, or what you have in offer isn't being valued. So I thi- I, I think as, as we go along with the formation of the nonprofit, uh, I certainly, uh, uh, I think, uh, city staff will, uh, look closely in, in, in terms of finding ways that this, that this board will have a real role in terms of, uh, the Friends of the Library and the thing that friends.
Um, typically with the library board meetings, uh, the, the president of the friends group would also attend the meetings and provide reports.
I think it's a great idea because of the library and also.
What you have said, that creating connection bridges between this board and the Friends of the Library and let's see how it is built so we can learn from each other.
And I think there's some kind of fleshing out that needs to be done, uh, and, uh, but we will uh, be diligent in, in, in doing it. And so, like I said, from where, from where I sit, I wanna make sure that, that you feel like you're not coming to these meetings and wishing your evening. And so, uh, uh, that's certainly something that I'm keeping on the front of my mind in terms of where this all goes.
Hi Jill. Do you have a presentation? No, it's finished. This is the one of the five. Excellent, it's the end of the presentation. So at this time, um, would you recommend that they look at moving forward with the organization of the Library Board of Trustees and merging it with the Friends of Imperial? Or I mean the Friends of Library?
Has different meanings in, in a, in that corporate kind of setting. And so, uh, I think there's gonna be certainly some collaboration that goes on. Uh, but I, but I think this, this part of it is something that, as staff, w- we need, we need to kind of flesh out and come back with, with that structure. Uh, but, and, and certainly I think the first steps will be in the form area of the formation of the Friends and creation of the bylaws and the articles and incorporation. So at this point, I don't know that there's any specific action that you need to take. If, if, if you have any thoughts in terms of, uh, things you want the staff to consider. Uh, typically, like with the Friends, you're gonna, the, the bylaws and the articles are gonna be written in a way that gives as much discretion, uh, as possible while staying within the bounds of what the law requires of a nonprofit, uh, and, and a corporation. Like, uh, that will be.
I, I do have a question, um, because I know that the Friends of Imperial, um, sorry for my mistake. Um, is all done by not staff time.
Correct.
So how, is this also gonna be under that same style, or how will it be created?
There will be an invitation, uh, out to the community to invite them to be members of the, of the Friends Group. Um, so I don't foresee, um, the Friends Group having all members being from city staff. Um, anybody that wants to be a Friends Group, obviously, can be if, if they're, they work at the city, but, um, it will involve all the community that, um, steps up and, and is part of the Friends Group.
And I think to answer your question, um, that's a nonprofit organization, so it is not, um, employee time, it's all volunteer time by those that want to partake in that, that, you know, that organization. So it would be open to the public as well as anybody that wants to join, just like the nonprofit group of Friends and Parks. Did anybody else have any other questions regarding, uh, the presentation or the organization? Alright, so we'll move forward with item E, reports. Let's start with staff reports, um, and we'll just kinda go clockwise down the board. From my left all the way down, do you have anything you would like to report tonight?
Clerk, or, um, for staff reports, that would be, um, Dennis and myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going backwards, I'm going trustee reports versus staff reports.
Are great to city realize and, and great major and, and folks like you to, to volunteer. Uh, but, but there are some tasks that have to get done with respect to the formation uh, and, and obtaining the tax clearances that, uh, are, are gonna require uh, some, uh, level of diligence. I'm not saying volunteers can't do that, but, uh, but, but I think it's gonna be driven, uh, by staff making sure that those things get done. So, uh, but in any case, with respect to, uh, reports, I, I, I really don't have anything to report to. Uh, and, and you have, her support is part of your, your backup, so if there's anything that she wants to. And, and you have, her support is part of your, your backup, so if there's anything that she wants to discuss by way of highlight. Yeah.
Members of the Board, I'll go ahead and just highlight some of the items, since, just in case we have public watching from social media. Our lunch at the library officially ends tomorrow. It was a quick lunch at the library program, we partnered with the school district to provide the lunches. And staff went down to the schools, as you're aware, to provide backpacks and books and activities each Friday. With that, we continue with a, a different program through the lunch at the library, which is called Farm to Summer. That's a brand new program that started this year that we received some funding for. And so we have partnered with the UC Farm Smart, which they will be providing all the programming for local agriculture, teaching kids ages zero through eighteen about what we grow in Imperial Valley. And they will be meeting on Thursdays from July fourteenth through August eighteenth, except for, except for on the fourth, they will not be providing the program. Our new Teen Makers Learn, Play, Create, and Cultivate is often running. We start, we held our first program last night. We've posted two programs to sign, register for online. And it created a little bit of disappointment for a few because within eight minutes, there's all ten spaces were taken. So we've so it's a good problem to have, but we really wanna serve all, all the youth at one and participate. So we've come up with providing more classes, the, our teens, which are ages fifteen through eighteen. This is their first experience with providing programs for children, so we don't wanna overwhelm them and, and fill, fill the classes too much. So we're keeping that limit at ten, but we are providing additional programs. And then at the end of the summer, their, their internship will be providing an evening where people can drop in and do activities with all the interns, so that'll be a great time. So we'll be providing more information about that. But I put a reel, a quick reel together with a dry ice experiment and within, I mean, my, I thought my cellphone was gonna die because Instagram notices. We reached over thirteen hundred likes so far with the Ice Ice Baby reel. So that was really exciting. We are having a national, National Ice Cream Day, which is, the actual day is the seventeenth. But What the Fudge Paletas is going to be coming out on July Friday, July fifteenth, from eleven thirty to one thirty at the library, providing free ice cream to the first two hundred people that show up. So if we have any leftover, we'll take them to the, the pool and the, and the camps, so they get ice cream as well. Programs continue and great resources continue to be available at the library, everyone's enjoying the library, the library is constantly busy. We're constantly cleaning, making sure it's a, a nice welcoming place to come to. And then there are a few grants that are open now that we're working on. The Zip Books Grant has reopened, and so we will be applying for that by July twenty first. There's copycat grants, we'll be applying for two of those before July twenty eighth. And then there is a Sustainable Libraries, which is a brand new grant, and the deadline is for August thirty first for that. It appears that we more than likely will apply for a sustainable libraries. Applying to purchase items that people can check out here, and so they don't have to buy it, such as tools, things like that. So it's making us sustainable, where we're not creating more. We're serving the community, community for their needs, but we're also being more sustainable, being, being more green. And I will end it with that. And you do have your calendar.
Ms. Turner, did you have anything for staff reports?
Nothing to report.
Alright, nothing to report, we'll move on to the second subject, Trustees Report. Ms. Hernandez, we'll start with you and we'll come down the row.
So nothing in particular, but I just wanted to say good job, I've been seeing what you guys have been posting and I'm really excited. Like I mentioned, when I spoke to be recommended, I've been on the other side, so it's so fun. And I can see about not wanting to overwhelm the rec leaders, cuz kids can be, can be something. But I'm excited, now I have my own, that she's asking me, okay, when can you take me? So, great job, I love it.
Yes, it is.
I don't have anything to report, I just want to welcome our new members.
I have nothing to report, but I also wanted to say, maybe following your Instagram and I've been telling all my friends and coworkers about the programs that you have, in fact, we talked about coming this Friday to the Paletas. The only suggestion is like, I haven't seen really all the dates, I see it on the calendar now, but on online, I don't think it's like a real schedule, or maybe I just missed it.
Thank you very much.
So before we close out, I just wanna say welcome aboard, ladies, to the new Board of Trustees, we are rapidly growing and look forward to working with you guys. So we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six thirty-five.